Good afternoon. During a declared emergency, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and in-person attendance limitations. This will be a virtual public hearing and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by their computer, a phone or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants will be automatically muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. Panel members participating today are Donald Taylor, Michy McCloskey, and Laura Alderson. I am Michael Clark. I am the panel chair. Any registered participants will be participating by audio only, and we also ask that you mute your devices until you are called down to speak. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Hudnashoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is no home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning by law that apply to the property, permissions to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consents to sever properties to create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab in the event of an appeal will be sending notifications and appeal updates and other updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee rendered here today, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, and in some limited circumstances to the local planning appeal tribunal, L-PAT. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. The hearing procedure is as follows. We'll call each item in the order listed in the agenda. In making your submissions, where an application is uncontested, the applicant or agent may proceed with a presentation if desired. Where the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to address the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will begin with a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I will comment when you are approaching or have reached the five-minute mark and ask you to wrap up. When addressing the committee, please clearly start off by stating your name and address for the record, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent proceeds first and makes a presentation to the committee of their application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals made at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, if being substantially revised, in order to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application have been informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they finish their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that have been raised by the speakers or answer any questions, not to introduce new information at that time. That will then mark the end of discussion, and the application is then taken into committee for a decision. Do any committee members or staff have any declarations of interest on the matters before us at the South Union's agenda? Okay, thank you. None to declare? So in that case, we can start with the first application of the afternoon, item number 21, 64 Bloem Avenue. And this is an application to construct a two-story ancillary building containing a second-story laneway suite to the rear of the existing two-story detached house. There are five variances. We have supplemental materials. We have memo from Engineering and Construction Services, and Planning has advised they have no comments. In the additional materials that we were just giving yesterday, we have the minutes. I don't know, that was from the previous application. Sorry, that's all we have. And the speaker on this application is only one speaker, Peggy Chu, the agent.
Yes, thank you. Peggy Chu. 124 Rotten Street, Suite 505.
Okay, welcome. Let's see, I don't know if committee members, do you need a, I guess, this is a laneway suite when we have a brief presentation from the agent on this?
I did provide some supplementary information for some context. So we are, the property is unusual. It's at the end of Bloem Avenue, basically a corner lot for the purposes of, I guess, the application. It is surrounded by, on three sides, by roadway. So two sides are laneways and Bloem Avenue at the front. Conveniently, there is a fire hydrant right in front of the existing home. So my clients had originally intended to build a two-story garage, sorry, a two-car garage, rather, much like their neighbors, but given the current zoning bylaw provisions for laneways suite, we do feel that this particular property is well suited for it. We did require some survey confirmation. You will see on the site plan that our next-door neighbor's garage actually approaches on our, my client's property. It is something that we have to take into account. Three variances have to do with setbacks.
Photo one in her presentation. Just asking staff to put the photo up of the picture tells a thousand words, so to get a good view of photos one and two showing the condition of the rear lane.
That's right.
Yeah, and photo two, next. Okay. Okay, thank you. I don't know if you want to add anything to that. Why don't we see if committee members have any questions, or if not, someone's ready to weigh in with a motion?
I did just want to clarify one variance, more so because of Bloem Avenue, the lots on Bloem Avenue is a little bit shorter, somewhat shorter than the lots adjacent at Boon. Figure one, you will see that, which is a contact site plan. That does affect variance number four, which is on the angular plane. You will see that we do, we don't have as much depth as some of the lots adjacent. So you'll see to the left of the subject property on Boon Avenue, those lots are a bit deeper. But you will also see on this contact plan that for the existing garages along Bloem Avenue, many of them and many of the structures are, from the laneway side, they are quite deep. So what we're proposing is not unusual as far as the depth is concerned, and I think in my supplementary information, I did clarify that the angular plane here has a lot less impact because the proposed laneway suite is going to be on the north side of the property, so it doesn't have the shadow issues that would otherwise, you know, affect the subject property in the existing home.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the agent? And if not, is someone ready to weigh in with a motion? I don't believe there's any conditions. Well, these are economic, of course, there's the conditions set out in the Engineering and Construction Services memo, and there is five letters of support.
I'll move to approve the application. I consider it to be minor in nature, meets four tests. Laneway has, laneway has is always exciting anyways, and also subject to condition by Engineering Services, Engineering and Construction Services.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McCloskey. Second for that, Ms. Alderson, all in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Ms. Chu.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck with the builds. The next application is item number 22, 48 Pelham Avenue.
Mr. Chair, Maryam Azimi. She's not on your list, but that's the applicant.
Oh, it's not Claire Lemieux?
No.
So give me that name again?
Marion, Mary M., M-A-R-Y-A-M, Azimi.
Aziz? I am I. Okay. So.
Hello?
Yes, just hang on a minute, please. This is an application to maintain the rear yard deck. We have two variances and one letter of opposition from 46. And that's all we have on this application. Also registered to speak on this is Ava McDonald of 1 Aberfoyle Crescent and Colin McDonald from 2178 Primate Road. Okay, and the letter we have is from the next-door neighbor at 46 Pelham. Okay, so I understand Maryan Azimi is the agent, not Claire Lemieux?
Yes.
Maryan, you're on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so why don't you give us a presentation, please?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, members of the committee. This is Maryam Azimi. I'm the applicant for 48 Pelham Avenue application. This property is located on the south side of Davenport Road and east side of Old Western Road. We are proposing to maintain the rear yard deck, which has two variances for this application. One is with the side.
Sorry, sorry, can I just interrupt for a second? You said you want to build this deck. I believe it's already built, correct?
It's existing.
Yes, I thought you said we want to build this deck. Okay, thank you, okay. I just thought I heard something where you said build.
No, we are proposing to maintain the rear yard deck.
Yes.
So it's basically legalizing the existing deck, and one of the variances is regarding the side yard setback. We are 0.3 meters from the west lot line, and the second variant is we are required to have a minimum of 25% rear yard soft landscaping, and we were not able to provide any. And so we are requesting relief of these two bylaws in order to proceed to building permits.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the agent before we go on to hear from the Mr. Taylor?
Just a question, I'm just looking at the survey. Am I reading this right? The neighbor at number 46, their frame garage is partially built on your property? Or am I reading that wrong?
That's correct.
It is partially built on your property?
Yes. So I believe the neighbor at 46, they were not aware of the variances and the extent of the proposal, and I reached out to them two days ago, sent an email drafting and addressing all their concerns, and I just made sure they understand there's no construction taking place, there is not going to be anything new added, it's solely for the purpose of keeping the rear yard deck.
Okay, yeah, it appears from their letter, I'm not sure if they understand what is being proposed, requested, what actions are already taking place. I don't know if they live on the property, or, because, and we'll hear from Ms. McDonald as to what they're aware of, what's being done here, because they also seem to be, have somewhat unfortunately disappointed with the process, and that they don't figure they had an ample time of 11 days from getting the notice in the mail, but that's not how it works. They can't come here and take back their opinion and come back. The decision will be made here today unless there's some overreaching reason for it, why it would be deferred. So let's hear from Ms. McDonald, and again, over the issue, Mr. Taylor, perhaps you want to ask her that question as well about their garage? Okay, so is.
Hi, everybody.
Ava McDonald, or Ava?
Yeah. It's Ava.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, so just to give everybody context, so my name is Ava. I own 46 Pelham Avenue, along with my brother Colin McDonald, who's on the line as well. So exactly as what was just outlined, our intention is not necessarily to reject, our intention is to come here and learn a bit more. We don't live at 46 Pelham, we live at separate properties. Our property is rented to a group of folks that rent our property, but we do have a property management firm that visits the property regularly, so we're very well informed in terms of normally what goes on there. So our intention is to come here today to get a better understanding of what was being proposed or requested, what actions have already been taken, but a lot of that's been answered already, right? So the idea is that a deck has already been built. I would have preferred to have had the request come from Claire initially, or somebody at 48 Pelham, so that, just so that we could have, you know, collaborated and been in the know, because we do have our garage that kind of shares that space, but I think I'm pretty clear on what actions have already been taken. For context, we get some heated emails from Claire, our property management gets heated emails from our neighbors typically when we have work that needs to be done physically on our property. So I just want to reinforce, I am disappointed that we didn't get more advanced notice from our neighbors, but it is what it is, and here we are today. So we are, yeah, we're just looking to get a bit of a better understanding around the impact that this, you know, sort of extended deck has on our property. We obviously have a garage that leverages this space that our tenants use to get in and out of the property to store their belongings and so on and so forth, and perhaps one day if my brother and I were to move back into the property, we might actually want to leverage that for a car. So that's really what we're here to understand, just, you know, what's the impact of this? I understand that we, this is our time to respond, this is it. I, you know, I am disappointed we didn't get more notice. I mean, I think Maryam or Maryan, pardon me if I got your name wrong, I think you mentioned that you did send an email to us two days ago. I don't, I don't have anything, so I don't, anyway, and the timing of it is poor, right? It's not enough time, it's not enough advanced notice, but here we are. So, yeah, that's what we'd really like to learn. What's the impact of this? Does this somehow mean that there's going to be issues in the future in terms of having folks get in and out of the garage? And if not, then, you know, I think we're willing to collaborate and accommodate, and I would ask that in the future, our neighbors do the same with us, right? So that we can all come together. So, yeah, that's our stance.
Yeah, very good point, because, you know, when you say you only had 11 days to digest and get a legal team to get, 11 days is good. Some people say found it in the mailbox four days ago, but you're right, if neighbors get in touch with people before they build something, in this case, they're legalizing something that was built without a permit, without advanced approval, but it's not like you come here for fact-finding and go back and then make submissions, because the decision is made.
Right.
So I hope you've received at least enough information to at least feel confident that what's there, I don't know, last time you've been to the property, it's nothing additional being built, it's to legalize what's already there. So.
Yeah, I understand that.
And we can.
Yeah, I mean.
We'll let Maryam respond to, you know, why they didn't contact you, but I guess that's up to them, but I agree that would give you more time, but I hope you at least have, feel a bit more confident knowing that nothing new is being built, it's what's already there. Okay, so I guess we're not going to hear, because the other speaker is your brother, we only hear from one party from each resident. So let's go back to Maryan Azimi to respond to your concerns, and then we'll take it into committee for a decision. Does any of the other members firstly have any questions for the neighbor at this point? Okay, so let's, oh, Mr. Taylor, go ahead, perhaps on the issue of the survey and what you've seen.
Yeah, exactly. Ms. McDonald, I'm looking at the survey and I see frame garage largely on your property, but apparently not entirely, and I'm wondering if you can explain how that came about? Are there any arrangements in place by a land exchange easement or whatever? How is that situation being managed or dealt with?
Yeah, no, thanks for the question. So this is exactly my point, right? So my intention would be to connect with our legal team to, because all of that would have had have been sorted when we had bought the property seven years ago. When we bought the property seven years ago, the garages existed as they did for both properties the way they are now, and to be able to look into that and understand, you know, how it came about and when it was approved and not, that's where I would have asked for more time to connect with our legal team. So I can't give you a definitive answer other than to say when we bought the property, that appeared, and when we did title searches and things of that nature, nothing was flagged by our legal team as, for example, our garage being inappropriate in terms of where it was located.
Anyway, let's not get into that. That's really not before us, you've been alerted to the fact, and I guess you can deal with it as you wish, so it doesn't really affect this application, but it's a good point that you should be aware of if you weren't already. You can thank Mr. Taylor for that. Okay, does anyone have any, oh, so we go back now to Maryam. I do see in our additional materials, we did receive a response to the letter of objection from the McDonald's, so that is in our additional materials. So.
Yeah, so I sent the letter, absolutely. I sent the letter on Monday, 1:16 PM. Yeah, and I have included the zoning notice as well.
Just ask staff to get that, you know, that there's a response, so. So is there anything else you'd like to add? This is your opportunity, and then we'll see if committee members have any questions or ready to make a decision.
No, I would like to hear your comments. I believe the nature of the variances are minor, and hopefully you agree with me.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, any questions for any of the speakers, or is someone ready to weigh in
I guess, Mr. Chair, it's not ideal to not have any soft landscaping in the rear yard, but as this is an existing situation, I'm prepared to move approval on grounds that it meets the four tests, and that approval would be unconditional.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. A second for Mr. Taylor's motion. Ms. Alderson, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Okay, thank you. Thank you to the neighbor and the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next application, item number 23, 218 Bain Avenue. It's an application for a, to construct a third-story, third-story addition, a third-story rear balcony, a one-story side addition, and a rear cover deck. The agent is Herman Shi. We have before us on this application, nothing, really nothing, but we did receive in the supplemental materials, conditions of approval from planning. Welcome, Mr. Shi.
Yes, my name is, my name is Heyman Shi. My address is 26 Trist Drive. I'm representing the owners of the property to present the case. As we just summarized, that our application for relief is very, very minor, only two points. First is the height, and the second is the GFA, and our application is very, very, very similar to a precedent on the same street at 252 Bain Avenue, and it's almost identical. And we, the owner have already reached out to all the neighbors, and she only, she just got one formal support letter, and I just received it yesterday and I forwarded to Adam. I don't know whether it's on record, but that's really summarize all application is about.
Okay. Let's see if panel members have any questions for you, and thank you, we have before us a copy of that decision. At that other property on Bain. Does anyone have any questions for the agent, or is someone ready to weigh in with a motion?
I have a question. I have a question. This is a semi-detached home, is it not?
Yes, it is.
And do we have any letter of support from your immediate neighbor? The other half of the semi?
No, not a formal letter, but the owner, the owners did talk to them. They don't have any objections.
Okay, but we don't have anything in writing from them?
No, not in writing.
Okay. Just wanted to ask, thank you.
Yes, they did, they did talk to them. They did talk to all the four sides, four sides neighbors.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shi. Any other questions, or is someone ready to bring a motion?
Mr. Chair, I think I might have a question. I'm just, I'm just looking again at the, at the notice and the recent planning staff
Actually, we should ask Mr. Shi, is, Mr. Shi, are you aware of, I mentioned it in my opening, that in the supplemental materials that we just received yesterday, there was a planning report with some conditions of approval. Perhaps we can get that, is that up on the screen?
Yeah, sorry, I, my, 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 I'm, my computer died out, I don't, I can't log on into the web, web, web apps.
Okay.
So it looks like the application in front of the committee already reflects the recommendations for one and two, and then, so the only thing that would be applicable is condition three about the privacy screen.
Okay, so that, yeah, that memo was dated August the 17th.
Yeah.
And I guess at some point, those two recommendations were implemented into your two variances. So the only additional one, Mr. Shi, which is that the applicant shall install a privacy screen along the east and west edges of the rear third-story balcony, measured at least 1.5 meters in height. So that's a very standard condition in Toronto, East York, when third-floor decks.
Yes.
So I assume.
Yeah, no, that's not, that, yeah, that's not, that's not an issue. We, I would, I would inform the owner that this is the condition that we have to comply when we apply for the building permit.
Yes, okay. Provided the committee agrees that they would impose that as a condition. Okay, so committee members, any further questions, or is someone ready for a motion?
Sorry, I guess condition one, they are asking it to be tied to plans.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion on this. I find the variances requested to be in keeping with the four tests under the Planning Act, and I move approval subject to the conditions requested by the planning department, which would relate to the submitted drawings and the construction of a privacy screen along the east and west edges of the third-story balcony.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We have a second for Mr. Taylor's motion. Ms. McCloskey, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Shi. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
The light's just dim during that last application, or am I about to pass out? Just got darker in here? Okay, it's okay, I don't mind, I just want to make sure it's not me.
I hear thunder.
I hear thunder here.
Okay, the next application is item number 24602 Dury, Dury Street. And actually, I like it darker. It's too bright. Even darker, that's fine. I won't fall asleep. Okay. This is to construct a two-story rear addition. There are two variances to the zoning bylaw. We have five letters of support, a previous decision. Actually, it's not a previous, it's mentioned in our book, but it's a previous decision, but actually it's a precedent dealing with rear yard landscape, which is one of the, which are the, one of the two variances. Registered to speak on this application is David Hanna, agent, and I guess the owner, but we'll, we don't hear from owners when, it looks like we have the two owners present, but may be available for questioning, but we only have, I guess this is, we don't have any neighbors with concerns or opposed or in support.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I sound checked David Hanna. I didn't get any reply. You can try, but.
Oh, yes.
Oh, he's there. Sorry.
Yes. Mr. Hanna.
I'm David. Yes, hi. Good afternoon, committee, committee member, committee chair. My name is David Hanna, architect with, representing Gregory and Jane LaLonde on Dury Street. We have two minor, we're, as you know, we're, we're putting on a two-story addition at the back and there are two variances. One of them is for the setbacks on the side. The existing house actually has a pitched roof, both of which are non-conforming in terms of the setback. So we pulled in our roof line as much as we possibly can to reduce that variance, but we still need a little bit of room to vent the roof. So essentially, that's why we have that variance. And the second one is the rear yard softscaping, which is a result of putting the addition on the back and also, I would say, a result of having a garage that's considerably set back from the lane, which doesn't allow us to put any softscaping there. So we've tried to do as much softscaping as we can, but they, the clients understandably requested to have a deck that would access off the back kitchen and, and we just don't have the space to do all the softscaping required, but we are doing as much as we can. So hopefully you guys will find that a minor variance and will support this application. We do have letters of support from the neighbors, both the immediate neighbors, and I think I added a series of different presidences, but apparently you only have one, so I'm not quite sure what happened there. That's all.
Maybe there are more. There are, there are more. I just didn't scroll. Maybe the other people did. So there's a whole, whole, whole whack of them. My, my.
Yeah, probably more than you need.
We don't get a stack of paper. We get it, so if I don't scroll enough, I don't see it, so.
Right, there you go.
They weren't, yeah, their previous.
Well, it's just a couple of, a couple of both of them, really. I mean, there's probably three for each of the different variances.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hanna. So why don't we just see if committee members have any questions or if not, there's someone's ready to weigh in with a motion here.
I'm prepared to make a motion. If no one else has a, has a question. I believe this is a straightforward application, great modern design, and I'm prepared to make a motion for approval of the variances and with no conditions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Alderson. Seconded for that. Ms. McCluskey, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you very much, Mr. Hanna. Okay, have a great.
Thank you very much. You too. Bye-bye.
Okay, the next application is item number 2541 Gilmore Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a two-story rear addition with a ground floor deck and a second floor deck. There is only one variance, the soft landscaping in the rear yard. 50% required, 33% provided. And we have one speaker, Andrew Marshall, the agent for the applicant. And we have nothing whatsoever on file, nothing from neighbors, nothing from city departments.
Mr. Chair, we do have one call-in user. Her name is Mariana.
Do we know where she, okay.
No.
Do you have, she's not on my, I don't have it on my.
She wasn't on the list.
Okay, so should we take, okay, let's hear from Mr. Marshall.
Hello, Andrew here. Mariana is the owner.
Okay.
Okay, so she's actually just here, is more or less listening, listening in. It's actually relatively straightforward application. The building fully complies, but currently there isn't an oversized garage at the rear of the back, rear of the property off the lane and the garage is actually set back quite far from the lane. So we kind of were faced with a couple of different decisions, which none of them were very viable. And the main was, would be to have basically knocked down the existing garage, which is obviously used for car, car parking and, you know, lawn equipment, bicycles, all of that type of stuff. In order to basically comply with the bylaw, we would have had to knock it down and probably just had a parking pad because we wouldn't have been able to build a new garage that complied with the requirements on the inside.
So in any event, sir, it doesn't look like anyone's weighed in from the city or neighbors with complaints. You do still complying 33%, which if you've been listening in or watched some of our other applicant hearings, it is occasionally quite less than that. So let's just see if they have any problems. The deficiency is, you know, 63 square meters. Sorry, less than that. 20.
Yeah, the, the, before addition, we were actually at 41%.
Okay, so they've improved the situation. So committee members, any questions or is someone ready to weigh in with a motion of approval here? Oh, Mr. Taylor? Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I find the variances to meet the four tests under the Planning Act and I move approval without conditions.
Thank you. Seconded from that motion. Ms. McCluskey, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Marshall.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next application is item number 26468 Berisford Avenue. It's an application to construct a second story rear addition and a third story addition over the dwelling. We have a revised yellow notice sheet. There were, were three variances. There are now two. The side exterior main wall height has been removed. And we have on this application. Sorry. Yeah, we have a applicant's presentation with a planning rationale supporting, petition and support and one letter of opposition from 490 Berisford. And planning is asking for a condition of approval that it be, it says, built substantially in accordance with the plans and we'll discuss that when we get to the point, whether, whether it should be that or constructed as illustrated, which is the new catchphrase. The applicant on this application is Vinnie Luccow, as well as we have the neighbors present from 490 and 470 Berisford, registered to speak. And in the supplemental materials, we received two letters from 460 to B and 460 Berisford advising of a concern with height. So is Vinnie Luccow there? That's the speaker.
Yes, I'm here. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, chairman member.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Hi, my name is Vina Lusong and I'm the designer and owner's agent for the requested minor variances.
Can we get?
I talk for 68 Berisford.
Okay, we're going to have moderator put your presentation up on the screen. And if you'd like to, people, so would you, why don't you make us a brief presentation, sir?
Absolutely, yes. So we have a simple proposal here. We are topping up the existing rear addition with a second story and adding some shed dormers to the third story. So the proposed addition here will create a more spacious bedroom on the second floor, whereas the third story dormers will create more headroom and much more usable space, which will be used for accommodate our family. And the proposed addition has triggered two minor variances, which are roof eaves and FSI. So I will start with the roof eaves and for that, can I please get you to turn to the front elevation at page eight, 4.0, please? Thank you. So the, for the roof eaves variance, we are matching the roof eaves to what is existing. And because this house is in a narrow lot, this variance is just unavoidable. So if you're familiar with the neighborhood impression, you will know it's, this variance is quite common because most of the lots in this region are just as narrow as ours. So for this reason, I think this variance is a minor in nature. Now I'm going to turn to the FSI. So we are proposing an FSI of 118.93%. I'd like to point out to the committee that the FSI's rate of variance itself at 102.72%. We are proposing an FSI increase of only 16.11%, which works out to be 27 square meters. I'd like to point out to the committee also that the proposed FSI 118.93% does not awkwardly represent the size of the addition proposing. The proposed four area is only 197.02 square meters and the FSI is only so high because the lot's just so small. And almost half of the four areas being located is the rear second story and the remainder is for the side shed dormers in the third floor. Can I get you to show slide number one, please? So with slide number one, you will see how small the addition on the third story really is. And I just want to talk about massing now, as I've seen there red, right, so this addition. So for massing, we think that the, the proposal is appropriate for the following three reasons. So first, the existing homes are already three stories long, right? So we're just adding side dormers and for, for this reason, the change in overall massing and the general impact of the proposed addition on the case is to escape is very minimal. But if I could get you to look at slide number two, it's the next over.
I think.
It will be able to see perspective.
Right slides to stop? Is there a problem that we're not getting this? They've been just scrolling through and I'm getting dizzy. So we're able to.
Oh, sorry.
Now? So we have that right slide up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's slide number two. That's correct, yeah. So, so, so you can see that all more French, right? So as you can see in this perfect, this perspective, we kept, there is no front roof line and the proposed addition of this roof line is very well concealed. There's one image over, if you could go to the next slide two also. And one more over, sorry. Oh, sorry, that's, okay, sorry, my bad. But anyway, so for a second, there are quite three, three stories on the neighborhood already, as you can see in the map there. And just illustrate how these homes are close by. If I could turn to slide number four. These slides here shows the general character of those homes. So one more over. There you go. Yeah, so you can see there, there are quite a few three stories on already close by. And third, we think our mass is appropriate because we, we do comply with all the others on the bylaws, right? So our building height setback, that are all compliance. And for these reasons, I, we think the FSI is minor in nature. Next, I just would like to speak to our neighbors. So the homeowners have consulted their neighbors and they acquired four signatures of support. I've created a map to illustrate support in a position. So the next slide over, number five, please. So this map here shows a signature of support from the neighborhood from the south. As you can see on the map, we also have a signature of support from one house further to the south, another one directly from the street and one more support over from two houses to the north. We did speak with our neighbors from the north, but we weren't able to get their approval. I explained the proposal to them. So just to conclude, I think that the proposed development is appropriate in keeping with the general character of the neighborhood. The homeowners are proposing a modest addition to better utilize second and third floor. I think the proposed variances are all minor in nature. For these reasons, I ask the committee to grant us the requested minor variances. Thank you.
Wow, exactly five minutes, Mr. Luccow. You must have practiced. Okay, so we have, does anyone have any questions for the agent before we hear from the neighbors? Okay, the neighbors are 260 to B. Sorry, no, those are the two letters. The letters in the additional materials are 260 to B and two, I'm sorry, 460 to B and 460. And the speakers are a little further afield at from 470 and 490 Berisford. So the next, next speaker on the list is Catherine Kornikovic.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Excellent, thank you. Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Catherine Kornikovic and I live at 490 Berisford. I have lived on the street for 25 years and we moved here because of the modest homes and the wonderful small streets filled with character. And the reason I've asked to speak at this meeting is to discuss my concerns with the proposed application of 468 Berisford and how these changes are in defiance of the zoning bylaws. Now, these additions requested by the homeowners will lead to a more congested feel, less sunlight at the front and back of the house, a loss of, and a loss of streetscape. Another important, important point to consider that no other homes on our street actually have a third story addition, making it look very out of place. And what, what I couldn't see in the, the artist's pictures earlier was they did not show the, the actual house and how it's situated. They are so tight in between each other that this would really create, I think, a big problem with, with spacing. So changes in the neighborhood should be sensitive, gradual and fit the existing physical character of the neighborhood. And this includes height, mass, scale, density and dwelling unit. The zoning bylaws are in place to protect neighborhood streets and neighbors by allowing these considerably large variances, I think, change, the neighborhoods will change dramatically, especially our little street. It's a very, very small and quaint street. So the first, the three, there were three variances now. It looks like they've covered one of them. So the, the first variant, the first variance of concern is the maximum permitted force place, force base index is 0.6 times the area of the lot. And they're proposing a 1.19 times the area, which is an increase of 0.59 or almost double, double the permitted space. The, the next one states the roof eaves may project 0.9 and no closer than 0.3. And there is zero, there's going to be a proposed eaves will be located zero meters from the north and south, south line. This means that the, the eaves are going to be touching the neighbors on both sides. I don't even know how this is doable. This, this seems to me that it could create potential water problems and flooding. Okay, so another issue of concern is the soil. Several years back, our neighbors at 487 Berisford wanted to add a third story and was denied due to sandy soil, which would not sustain a third level. With the extra floor space, walls, beams, et cetera, this will cause extra rain and strain on the home in question and potentially impact the homes on either side as well. Finally, the owners have complained that the yard is too small and want a larger place for children to play. Yes, Toronto's homes are very small, very tight. I have noticed many families playing together on the front lawns of several of the homes, especially on the southern part where this owner, the homeowners live. They do have a lovely green space in the front of their home where I've seen kids play all the time. In addition, there, there's Berisford Park, which is just a few, maybe five-minute walk and is a great place for kids to play and where I used to take my daughter regularly when she was a child. The existing third floor is a lar, is large enough for the children's playroom or alternatively, they can use the basement as a playroom. I have seen the, the, the peak, the, the little floor on the top and it is, you can stand, I believe you can stand in the middle of it and, and it's pretty tall, I think, for kids. I think it'd be a great space. I don't know why they would have to go bigger to make it out of the context of the rest of the neighborhood. The original footprint of the home had three bedrooms on the second floor. And when the, when the children get older, they can always revert back to that third, to three bedrooms, as our neighbors across the street at 489 Berisford did recently. So families with two or four children have raised kids in these spaces or smaller for decades and many homes in Toronto are small and space is limited. We, we, we all acknowledge that. But families should take this into consideration when buying a home in the city. We did and we knew that this is the size that we were going to get and we, we made the best of it. There are, there are alternatives. They can potentially buy a new home and I know it's more expensive, but that's an option or moving to the suburbs, which I know a lot of people don't want to, but I think we have to take, be considerate of, you know, the neighborhood. um, I think we have to take, be considerate of, you know, the neighborhood and the neighbors as well. Um, in conclusion, items we need, that need to be addressed are the sandy soil and the zoning bylaws, which are being ignored by the builders and the homeowners. Uh, Bearisford four sixty to five sixteen is a small and condensed street with wonderful people. And by allowing these variances, it will change the streetscape and set a precedence for homeowner, homeowners to build large homes with two stories and additions in the future. Thank you for your time. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Kornikovic. Does anyone have any questions for the speaker before we hear from the next speaker? Okay, uh, Maris Earnstones at four seventy Bearisford, a little closer to the sub, right next door to the subject property.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep. Hello?
Hello, Maris speaking. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you. Yes, loud and clear.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I, I live at four seventy Bearisford Avenue. And to clarify on the plans, it says four sixty-six Bearisford Avenue is a three-story detached dwelling on the plans. It is not. It is a two-story dwelling and semi-detached. And it has a flat roof for about eighty percent of the developed dwelling going from east to west, from front to back.
Are you referring to a document? Perhaps we can get staff to put it up on the board? Is that on their plans or on the survey? Where, what are you talking about? Which app, which?
It's, it's on the plans submitted by Vinnie.
Okay.
It's, I believe it's on the first page.
Revised plans.
No, the very, very first plan. Uh, is there a number here? A one decimal zero. Yes.
So you were saying, please repeat what you were saying?
Uh, four sixty-six Bearisford on the plans, there it says it's a detached three-story dwelling. It's a two-story uh, home with eighty percent flat roof, which is a semi-detached home. Uh, I would understand if four sixty-six was similar to four seventy and four sixty-eight was sort of like bundled in there, but uh, the aesthetics, in my personal opinion, they're gonna look funny. You know, uh, the homes are large enough as they are. Uh, the attic space has tall enough headroom that you can stand in it. Uh, I, I know the, the, the owners were concerned about the space that they had when they already bought the house. But um, so my, my big, my, I guess my first concern is, uh, but the eaves currently are located zero point zero zero meters from the property line. That is the case on the second floor, uh, where the current eaves are. If somebody would actually take a look, uh, the houses have shifted somewhat and the eaves have maybe a space of two inches, maybe at the front of the house. Uh, but at the back of the house, they're sort of crooked and leaning on top of each other. So, uh, if they're to construct the, the building that they propose, uh, the, it would prevent me from gaining access to maintain that side of the building. Or if, if I chose to build a third story addition and gable it out, that, the, the houses are crooked, you know? So I would request that maybe those eaves get, you know, pushed in more so that there is accessible space that somebody can, you know, do work there. Uh, what else? There, uh, Vinnie submitted pictures of other homes in the neighborhood that have gabled, uh, uh, their third story additions. But the majority of the ones that I see, they're actually set back about eight to ten feet from the front brick wall of the house. Uh, the current plans, uh, they're set back four feet from the bay window, which protrudes out of the second floor brick wall at the front of the house. Uh, aesthetically, you know, if, if it was gabled back, maybe eight or ten feet back further, so it's not a visible eyesore, you know, walking from, uh, the sidewalk. Uh, that's about all, sir. I'm, this is a bad plan.
Okay, Mr. Earnstones, thanks. So thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for the speaker before we go back to, uh, the agent for his rebuttal? Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I'll ask a question, speaker. Uh, that, that drawing we were just looking at, A one point zero shows your house to be a three-story house. Is that an accurate representation?
Uh, yes, the, the third story is an attic. Uh, my house is, uh, just an attic. And four sixty-eight Bearisford actually has a, a finished third floor dwelling already on the third, third floor.
How much higher is, if it's tall, is four sixty-eight compared to your house?
The height of the building?
Yes.
Of the, uh, we have mirror image homes, uh, in height and visual appearance from the front of the house.
You, you're talking about your existing house and what is proposed at four sixty-eight?
No, uh, could you repeat your question, sir?
How much taller is the proposed house at four sixty-eight than your current house at four seventy?
I believe when I spoke to Vinnie, Vinnie said it's going to be four inches taller.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Luqao? Just please respond to the, uh, what's been raised by the neighbors, please?
Yes, absolutely. Um, so I one hundred percent understand that the concerns. Um, and, uh, but we respectfully, uh, uh, disagree, right? Because, uh, I'll, 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 I'll talk about the first place index first. So like I mentioned before, right? Uh, the increase is not anything outrageous. Uh, the existing is already a version itself at a hundred and two point seventy-two percent. And we're only increasing the first place index by sixteen point one more percent. I would like to make a correction there that I heard from four ninety saying that the second story already contains, uh, three bedrooms, which is incorrect. On the second floor, you only have a master bedroom and it's very small bedroom, which right now is being shared about both of their kids. Uh, they're very small and what the clients are doing here, they're future proofing their house for the future, right? So the bedroom on the second floor is going to be utilized by one kid. Whereas the one on the third floor of side dormers additional creating is for the kid who wants, he's a teenager and needs his own space. Uh, so we're turning these two bedrooms home into a three bedrooms home, right? Um, and, uh, again, I just want to go back to the, the fact that we're complying with most bylaws, right? Like in terms of a building height, uh, as, as raised by Mr. Morris. Uh, we, 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 we are not, uh, a variance in building height, right? Uh, even though we're building a roof that's only four inches higher than what's existing, then your roof actually is going to be sitting behind the new roof, which is not really going to be visible from the street. If you think about your, when you're standing in the street looking it up, you're not really going to see it because it is recessed behind, uh, uh, the, the, uh, new roof. And, uh, I, I, I just want to say here that, uh, we, uh, we, in our design, intentionally maintained the existing architectural character of the home to respect the block of houses in between where situated. There's no representation, right? We maintain the existing front elevation. We have recessed and proposed armoration to achieve that effect. Uh, it, and, um, and, uh, I'm actually a little bit surprised with how the, the rebuttal, given that we are on uh, in the same page. We, we, we try to, we, 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 we are keeping the original character of that neighborhood. Um, but I also want to say that a concern was brought up about, um, building safety uh, and the site capacity, right? Uh, I just want to say the obvious here that this is structural matters, not a zone issue. But nonetheless, I will highlight that, uh, we have successfully completed many, uh, projects in this neighborhood in the past. And I do have an instructor, uh, engineer in-house who is going to ensure everything is done safely. Um, and for the eaves, um, uh, 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 like, like Mr. Morris, uh, uh, pointed out, we are not making it any worse than what it is today, right? So we are actually just, uh, if you look, look back at the front elevation of the house at eight four point zero, you will see in that elevation, we are keeping the eaves in exact same locations far from the proper line as this. And as I explained to you, Mr. Morris, uh, during our session with them, is that this is quite common in, in Toronto, right? Like, uh, properties are built all the time with a zero inch setback for, for the eaves. And we will, uh, address to, to make sure, uh, it won't impact this property. And if he ever wants to build a property himself for that will have the eaves very close to ours, it's not going to impact him to build his, uh, his property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Luqao. Does anyone have any, uh, are you, are you finished? You're, uh, like to add anything or you're?
No, no, I'm, I'm finished. Yes.
Okay, before we take it into committee, I just want to ask, uh, a question for the Secretary of Treasury, the recommended, uh, I assume you have no problem with the recommended planning con, condition of being subs, to be built substantially in accordance with the revised plans?
Uh, no, no problems.
Okay, so a question from staff is, um, at least at Tobago York, about a year ago, we moved the catchphrase constructed substantially in accordance was replaced by instructed as illustrated and honing in on the particular page with respect to the particular variance, as opposed to just being all the plans with respect to all the variances, which puts too much pressure on building staff to have to then check everything rather than honing in on what staff really meant. So my question to you, is that appropriate or should it be further revised to be constructed as illustrated? And if so, which, with which plans?
I think, uh, the other wording is used more if they want to capture one specific thing. So say it's related to depth or a setback. Maybe there's an odd lot line, so they want to make sure that something isn't built beyond that. I think in this case, they want to capture all of the revisions.
Okay.
Um, worded it this way.
Okay. Okay, so committee members, any questions for, um, the applicant or the neighbors? Uh, or is someone ready to weigh in with a motion? Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I'll weigh in, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, I think this is a very reasonable, uh, proposal. You know, we've had, we've had situations earlier today where we're dealing with homes on, uh, smaller lots and the necessity for making them narrow and tall. But narrow and tall is, uh, quite, uh, common on this street. Particularly the, the immediate neighbor to the north, number four seventy. This house is going to look pretty much, uh, identical to it. So I'm satisfied with the, uh, integrity of the proposal. I think it meets the four tests. And I move approval subject to, I guess, yeah, I'm moving approval of the revised plan, which eliminated variance too. And making it conditional on being constructed as illustrated on, and I'm struggling to identify the plan, but constructed as illustrated in some plan.
Mr. Taylor, I think I just asked, I asked staff and she suggested that this was inappropriate, the way they requested, uh, construct substantially is illustrated and just make reference to all the plans.
All right, then, then the, uh, subject to the, the condition requested by the community planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We have a second for that motion? Ms. Alderson, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Luqao, and thank you to the neighbors. Our next application is item number twenty-seven, ninety Rose Park Drive. It's an application to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a full third story addition. And there are six variances. We have, uh, revision yellow sheet revising variance number three. The roof eaves projection will now be one point eight two meters and not two point one six meters to the required side yard setback. Everything else remain the same. And, um, I think that's, oh yeah, and the additional materials, we have urban forestry requesting condition number one. And, uh, letters of support from ninety-six and sixty-five Rose Park. Registered speaking this application is Susanna Krikorska.
Yes, hello.
Welcome.
Hello.
Um, committee members, do you require a presentation in this application? No, shaking your head. Um, we don't have any questions, um, for the applicant. Actually, do you do have presentation? Why don't you make a short, brief presentation?
Sure. Sorry. Did you want me to make a presentation?
Uh, committee members? You don't require one? Okay, I think we've all reviewed what you've, uh, sent to us. So, uh, let's just see if anyone has any questions and let there's anything you'd like to advise the committee of.
Uh, no, actually, well, I did have one question about the parking. It is one of our variances. Um, and, uh, it, it comes to be because the, some of the property that we park on is, um, is city property. So, uh, I was speaking with the zoning examiner and he mentioned that, um, the way to go about this is to talk to transportation during the permitting process. And I'm just wondering if committee has any, um, suggestions about that.
Let's see, we do have a memo from transportation. Right, they've, um, asked for a condition of approval. And it tells you where, you have, you seen that memo dated?
I actually haven't. No, I, I looked through the material and I didn't see that memo. So sorry about that. Um, I will take a look.
Briefly assessed, transportation does not object to the application on condition. The obsolete driveway within the boulevard must be restored to stop landscaping and the existing curb cut restored to a full face curb. With an approved zero parking variance, there would not be any legal parking on site. And then they give their, at the end, last paragraph said, should it get approved, transportation services request to be approved on condition. And the owners to contact permits, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. To obtain a paving permit to restore and arrange to restore the curb cut. So you can, uh, review that. It's up on the screen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, committee members, any, uh, questions for the applicant, the agent? And we do have a support, five letters of support.
Yeah, there's actually six, but one may have come just too late.
It could be. Okay, um, oh, you know, I did mention in the, yeah, we had the ones I mentioned. I don't know if that added that to count. It actually makes it seven. Or whether some of them were double counted. It doesn't really matter. It's not, it's not a numbers game. Any questions or is someone ready to weigh in with a motion? We have the, uh, planning condition and, and the, um, transportation. Or maybe we don't. Sorry, maybe we don't, do we, I don't believe we, do we don't have a, we don't have a planning.
Sorry. No, I was just going to say there's no planning.
No, it's just the, uh, just transportation.
Transportation has two conditions, yeah.
And, and urban forestry.
Right, that was in additional materials I mentioned at the outset. Okay, is someone ready to, uh, weigh in with a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the application. I believe it meets four tests. Um, however, uh, subject to condition, um, one by urban forestry, um, along with transportation, uh, transportation's two conditions as well.
Thank you, Ms. McCloskey. Do you have a second for that motion?
I'm happy to second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you. Um, thank you, Susanna Krikorski, Krikorska. You have your, uh, application has been proven. Please contact, have your client contact transportation services in accordance with those conditions. Okay, our next application is item number twenty-eight, sixty-five Dury, uh, Dury Street. And, uh, this is an application to, uh, construct a two-story rear addition and a rear yard deck. And there are two variances. Uh, we have, uh, one photo and nothing else. Uh, we have, uh, one photo and nothing else whatsoever on this application. Registers to speak is Sam Salas, the agent for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear, sir.
Uh, my name is Sam Salas of one seventy the Donway West in Toronto. Uh, I am with you representing my clients, Mr. and Mrs. Simard, the owner of, the owners of sixty-five Dury Street. Um, the subject property is situated south of, uh, Bluer Street and east of, uh, sorry, east of, west of Keel, I believe. Uh, it is composed of, uh, twenty, uh, feet wide, uh, lot by ninety-four and a half feet deep. Housing, um, uh, single-family detached house, two bedrooms and a deck right now in the back and a shed. Our proposal calls for, uh, erecting a two-story without a basement, uh, rear yard addition with a modest, um, deck and the demolition of the existing shed. Um, the couple, uh, have two babies right now, two kids. Uh, the existing second floor now has only two bedrooms. And they needed an extra bedroom for, uh, their two future kids. They have them now, like babies, small babies right now. Uh, this necessitated a space under on the ground floor, which will accommodate for a new, um, family room. Um, what else I need to say? Uh, this, this addition actually generated two variances. One of them concerning the floor space index, which were allowed with zero point six nine percent of the lot. We are, uh, proposing zero point eight five. Uh, that doesn't comply with the requirements of the zoning by law. And the second variance is, uh, the eaves that, uh, they require, um, thirty, let me just read it. They require thirty centimeters, uh, away from the lot line, what right now we don't have anything. It's a zero. We just continue with the existing one. So we can, before, because we stuck to the existing, uh, uh, walls in the back and we continued that, um, we maintain the existing eaves, which are basically zero, um, uh, distance from the south property line. It was technically impossible to go inward because that's existing one right now.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does anyone have any further questions, um, for the agent on this application? And I don't believe, we don't have any conditions from anyone being requested. And no one else, no, as I said earlier, no one's weighed in on this application.
I'm, I'm happy to make a motion unless someone has any questions.
Go ahead.
Uh, this application meets the four tests, um, and I'm move approval without any conditions. There's nothing from any city department.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Alderson. Seconded by Ms. McCloskey. Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Salas. We'll see you again.
Thank you, thank you. Take care.
Okay, our next application is item number twenty-nine, one thirty-three Parkmont Road. Uh, it's an application for my page, last, last page. Uh, it's an application, uh, to construct a partial, no, that's the last one. On the wrong application. We're having a terrible storm here. Hopefully we won't lose power. It's been pouring for the last fifteen minutes. Uh, one thirty-three Parkmont Road is to construct a new detached garage in the rear of the existing two-story detached dwelling. There are four variances. And, um, planning has issued a report, uh, a negative planning report that the application should be refused dated August the eighteenth. And at which time, I believe, we also have materials, uh, the agent Murray Fern requesting a deferral in light of the negative, uh, planning report. Uh, but it wasn't on our planning memo, but, uh, I guess they had to stick around for the afternoon. Mr. Fern?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's me. I'm, uh, requesting a deferral on this application. I guess mainly because, um, if I can start here, we made our application, our application was accepted by the Committee of Adjustment on May the eleventh. Friday, August the thirteenth at four fifty P M, I received an email from the planning department. So three months after our application.
Yeah.
And eleven days, well, actually, I, I didn't see the, um, the note until Monday because obviously on Friday afternoon, so I didn't see it till, till Monday, so eleven days before the hearing. And four days before it says here, um, um.
Yeah, okay, you made, you made your point. You made your point. It's late in the afternoon. I, I make, I get your point and I guess it was Friday the thirteenth, so if you didn't like that day before, more reason to you not prefer that day. Um, no reason, you know, why that, why that should happen. That's, uh, something you can address, uh, call staff and discuss, but, um, you're right. I guess you could have, I, whether there's something that could have been done, recommendations, um, to defer this, to deal with, to work with you sooner than just before the application. So again, I hear what you have to say. You've made your point. Um, committee members? Uh, Mr. Fern is asking for a deferral. Um, seems to be a pretty good reason.
I'm happy to back that motion.
Yeah, I guess it puts, you know, I guess the problem is your client wants to build a building of some sort and this puts them back in there now to go back and hopefully when they're ready to go back on and you can at least see if staff can try to get you on the next available, uh, application.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. It would be different if this was legalized, if it was a legalized situation, but it's not that. Then who cares? Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Sorry for interrupting.
No, that's okay.
You wrote to make a motion to defer?
I just, sorry, yes, I made that twice, actually. On the motion, I'm happy to make that motion for the floor.
Thank you. Seconded for that, Mr. Taylor. Okay, we'll see you again, Mr. Fern. Sorry about that.
Well, thanks very much, members. I appreciate it.
Sorry, Mr. Fern.
Okay, bye.
Okay, the last application of the afternoon uh, is to, is nine eighty-two Ozzington Avenue. It's to construct a partial third-story addition, a new third-story uh, rear third-story balcony. And, uh, we have on this application supporting material and, um, that's it. The applicant is Jonathan Benkowsky. No comments from, uh, from city staff. And I believe there's, well, that's it. It's one variance as well. From point six to point nine seven in terms of the F S I. Mr. Benkowsky, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
How are you? Uh, committee members, would you want a, uh, brief presentation, Mr. Benkowsky? On this? I see there's no opposition. It's just the, uh, F S I, sorry, G F A.
I would just like to say, uh, welcome back, Barb, and I take it as an extreme compliment that you have scheduled me last on your first hearing back, so thank you very much.
Okay.
I wasn't responsible, but I'll take the pleasure of the credit.
Yeah, it's funny, Barb. I, you, I was on a downtown one yesterday and they kept referring to the Deputy Secretary of Treasury and it wasn't your voice. I couldn't figure out what was going on yesterday.
Well, luckily the rain has stopped. If there's another band coming, we'd like to make it back to our vehicles, or at least I would, because since I left my windows open. So, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Fern, uh, sorry, for Mr. Benkowsky? Before I have to go bail out my car? If not, is anyone prepared to make a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion to approve the application. Um, pretty straightforward. Uh, consider it to be minor in nature and please, there's no conditions.
No, there aren't. Thank you, Ms. McCloskey. Seconded for that. Ms. Alderson, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Benkowsky. Okay, we'll see you again. Okay, and now the most important motion of the afternoon, motion to adjourn at four fifty four P M. Ms. Alderson? Okay, we're done. Thank you for a great hearing, everyone.
Bye, everyone.
See you, everybody.
Have a good Labor Day weekend.
Nice to see you guys. Bye.
Bye.
Nice to see you. Bye.
Bye, members. Thank you for a good hearing.
Welcome back, Barb.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Barb. Nice to have you back.
Yeah, bye, Barb.
Bye.